Please call the meetings around the commission order. Please join me in pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you everybody for being here in attendance and those online that are joining us. First item on the agenda would be approval of the minutes. And should there be two sets, correct?
Yes.
Regular and a special. Any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Move to approve both sets.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve both sets of minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion varies. Approval of bills. So we have a list of bills and a list of additional bills on our desk.
Move to approve. Right at the second.
Motion and a second to go ahead and approve bills. Roll call please.
Bill Homme.
Aye.
Otis.
Aye.
Jessner.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Grant.
Aye. Those are approved financial reports. Financials were in your packets as well. Anybody have any questions on the financials as submitted?
I'll move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the financials as approved. All those in favor, roll call please.
Otis.
Aye.
Jessner.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Will Homme.
Aye.
Grant.
Aye. Financials are approved. Treasurers checks. Anybody have any questions on the treasurer's checks for the month? Now that asks for a.
I will move to second.
Motion and a second to go ahead and approve the treasurer's checks. Roll call please.
Volk.
Aye.
Otis.
Aye.
Jessner.
Aye.
Will Homme.
Aye.
Grant.
Aye. Agenda, any additions to the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion varies. First up, we have Sarah. Sarah Lady, it's you. Good morning.
Good morning. Well, we've got a busy summer. Just got our project back to the state here. The 4H has had a really good, positive experience. Lots of contests, a lot of livestock. So it's been a busy summer for us and we'll be having our family fun night for 4H on August 13th. That'll be out at the park, at Rooker Park. We're gonna have a pool party and all of our awards for the kids, so it'll be a fun time for them. And then that'll be the time for new families to kind of check out 4H and possibly join. So. But I've got the budget here. You've had a chance to look it over. As you know, salary, just not much change from last year, just increase in salaries. Lindsay and I are 50/50 split, state, county. You did get a state raise that was passed in the North Dakota State Legislature. We did add a little bit extra in travel as travel expenses have been increasing. And there are a few extra trainings and conferences that we're planning to attend. We did add a little bit in dues and registration. There's a couple more extension associations that Lindsay and I are going to be joining this year. But as far as the rest of the budget, I'm pretty much straight on what we've been meeting. So does anybody have any questions regarding anything in the extension budget?
I think both you and Lindsay are underpaid again. You know, if that's 50%, you're gonna have a pretty good idea what you guys are being paid for what you're doing and how long you've been there. Both of you.
Yeah, that is 50%. And actually, they did, as you mean, they did equity paying within North Dakota as well. And they did look at my salary and they found that I was being underpaid. So I did get an equity raise as well. However, that is not included in your 50/50 split. Not at all paid by any of you.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Sarah? I know you guys have been having a busy, busy last couple months.
Yeah.
Involved 4H activities, so.
Yeah.
It'll be great to see you.
It's time off, so.
Nice numbers with the 4H continuing.
Yeah, projects are up for us this year.
So.
They work.
That's good. Anything else for Sarah? Well, thank you so much for being here, Sarah.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Elizabeth.
I'm just here with my budget. I just updated the salaries as per HR. And then under technology, there's a quarter dollar increase, which just comes from we pay for part of the recorder software. And through our IT, there's been some software there and both those costs have done up in those departments. Other than that, it'd be safe to say the same.
Pretty straightforward. Anybody have any additional questions, thoughts? What about? Yes, no, maybe. Nope, okay. Appreciate being in here.
Thank you.
Next up, Sean Rude. Is Sean here? Yeah. Okay. Sure, wanna grab the water board to see if they're ready for us? Otherwise, we'll jump into Kevin's stuff and then everybody will sit back and have to wait. I think our water board's ready. Morning, Brian.
Good morning.
Thanks for coming in.
Yes, we've got a few updates this time. We did have a meeting on our Ramsey County Grain Ten project. We're looking at a tentative time schedule of mid-October for having an informational meeting for the hearing and the vote of the Alex Wentz Landowners on that. Just waiting on our lawyer right now to finish going through his spreadsheet one more time. Time to get all the landowners as accurate as possible. But we'll be hearing quite a bit of vote about in the near future. One concerning Kevin is we're gonna have an engineer look into the, for the requested code from Lorenz's. Where they wanted it, I think you had planned to put the poly fill in it. And they gave.
How many?
Eight.
Hundred and three?
Is that on eight that one is? Yeah. So, that one, I, they won't do any actual engine surveying on that, but he thought he'd do it all on the computer. So we'll have that relatively quick. And other than that, we're just discussing policy right now. So we're trying to balance our needs with the bottom landowners and the guys up top. We've got the issues on the bottom where the lake is up on people and the guys on the top want some grain dumped. So we're trying to work with each side as much as possible. Both on the way, come up with the best solution and everybody will be a little unhappy in the end. And that's the nearest, we figure we'll come to a great solution, so. Let's see, our budget was turned in. I know if that's in front of you guys right now, for the most part, it should be staying roughly the same. One of our assessments, we've got money in the bank, so we'll be keeping the assessment out of that. The rest of them, the guys in request, if it stays on, so we can piggyback build up a little bit to work as needed.
Those repair agents went from $500,000 to $100,000?
That's where our, we used to have a breakdown between the assessments a bit. So it's all kind of re categorizing with our, as we're getting our computer systems rebuilt and the software redone. Instead of, if it all comes out of the same checkbook in the end, but the money comes in from different places. And we used to have it broke down and now a little more streamlined this way. It just leads to some questions like that, just a lot of certain accounts have changed.
Right, and the bottom area of like the end of the budget for the mills? You don't have anything in it for like 22, 23? Any reason for that?
Um, that is a question I guess I have to ask Stacy on before I can say that.
Cause I just see that they have it even like.
Yep.
Nothing, curious.
Oh, as far as I can say, it's probably hasn't been filled in yet. So it's something I can discuss with you. Make sure we get it all the way up to.
So, okay.
I think last year was 1.53. If that's what I have in my old one.
I was just curious if there was a change to go. You know, if it's maintaining or. Or is your budget?
Yeah, for the most part, we're maintaining. You know, a couple of years ago, probably was the time you got on. I think that's when we had a couple of big things going through that we built our budget up. So we had a higher bill at that time and now we're able to get it back. Cause that was one of the things at that time, Jeff said, is commissioners want to see it not bouncing around. So instead of, we've got it this time, we can have some contingencies built into it. But we don't have to raise it for one year and then be able to drop the balance. Make it a little easier for it to fit in your guys' budgeting and needs. For the most part, we've got enough cash on hand to cover anything we could think of coming out, so. A lot of our big expenses come through the assessment district, so that's, you know, we're all able to handle that on our end. Without having to ask for help from the county on that.
Any other questions, Brian? Anything else for us, Brian?
I don't think so at the moment, we're.
Okay.
I got one pertaining to the budget. Have you had a chance to take a peek at that Texas crossing up?
That's sort of what we're discussing right now. We're gonna have Dan Fisher from, might do work on that. He's the one that's done the engineering on the Edmore Cooley in Grain Ten. That's why we're going to work with him on this one, because he's already done a lot of engineering about and below it. You know, it's been an issue that's come up here, we just thought about that. Every year since I've been on the board, at least a few months in the year, we discuss what's going on there. How it ties into the whole overflow down into the lot area. We'll get a fresh set of eyes on it. He's got some different ideas as to what could be done to help there. So we'll let him put together a proposal and probably about the time we know of the Edmore or Grain Ten project goes through. That should all kind of be coming about the same time and.
Tie it all into one.
Well, you know, the county will be, any work that needs to be done, changing that, that's, you know. What it is is the water comes from the north. It does a hard 90-degree turn. I've engineered, fixed it one time with, the thought is that they put the road and made the township road right down in the, alongside the regulator water course bed when they did it originally. And narrowed out the channel. So, and in that spot, there's an actual overflow where the water gets high. It goes down and ties into our lot and channel. So. After all that happens, and then it crosses this crossing that Bill has been had, we'll have to discuss with Bill. And there's one landlord in particular, that he's the only guy that when that crossing overflows, you can't access the land until the water's done again. So it's not a high-use area, but it's an expensive area to have to deal with. So that's what we're hoping is we can come up with a solution that, you know, keeps the water in the channel it's meant to be. Doesn't overflow housing issues all the way down and allow the one landlord to work across there. There's been a lot of solutions that have been tried in that area. And ever since the bridge was taken out, that's, you know, that's when problems like this started. But that was also before water started increasing too, so. So we'll, like you asked for, we'll get an opinion on that and see how we can tie it together. County's gonna do some culverts, do some work there. The way that Grain Ten project would affect it is there, it's probably about three miles to the west. That's kind of a cattail choke area. And that's something that the grain project could deal with that. And that, getting that area cleaned up, that would probably help all to allow the water to move through that bottleneck area. Water pusher lakes. That's kind of the area that's started off this whole Grain Ten project. You know, we've had a lot of questions. People say, oh, it's 120-some miles of ditch that you need, you're proposing to clean out. It affects the guys on the bottom end that aren't part of the project, but they're impacted by the lake. But we've had some discussion with the engineer and the lawyer involved that, you know, there isn't 122 miles of ditch that needs to be cleared out. Really, there's about 10 miles of ditch that has issues. It's just, as soon as you start talking about who pays for it, well, best way from our perspective is to have a full assessment area on the whole thing, so everybody that's dealing with the water pays for it. Just doesn't necessarily mean that we intend to clean out 122 miles of ditch. It's just that everybody involved in it can help pay for the areas that need to be cleaned up to better cause the problems.
Thank you.
Okay, Kevin, do you have anything that you need to be working with the water board about? Any potential extreme crossing standards that we're looking at? Asking for?
Um, I can pick out there. Either in the works or I don't know about.
Okay.
Most of the big ones on the Edmore, that, you know, we've done those in the past few years. A lot of the bigger stuff, we've already taken care of.
All right. Okay. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Rude. Good morning. Good morning. I apologize for being late. Take somebody else eleven hours to pay a contract that he's thirty. So hopefully, it won't be for short. Brought to you guys, I sent a letter out just to put it out in black and white. I've talked to you guys about four ambulance services running on money. We have ambulance tax districts that will be formulating new state law, takes it back today. That requires every service with a population of less than 10,000 to form an ambulance district. We are not there, but every service that is our size is waiting to see what we do. Every, pretty much every ambulance in the Northeast, there are people that have passed through. We're about the only ones into the whole house. So August 8th, I'll be meeting with pretty much every county emergency manager, every ambulance service, response unit, county officer to discuss the ambulance tax districts. I'll have it in black and white, step one through F of what we're gonna be doing for it. I will have to formulate our own ambulance tax district board to oversee, make sure the minus amount where it's supposed to go. But it'll be step one, first step, two, three, four. We'll have in public forums, let them know what we need for, to keep us running. Right now, insurance companies are not paying. We're only receiving 20% and we can't bill after that. So we're getting the breadth of the healthcare, because we're the smallest of every healthcare agencies. So we're not receiving, I think I said in the letter how much we got in revenue. We should have been potentially, and we only got 20% of that, which doesn't cover our payrolls. We've reduced staff and we can't afford to right now. We're using flex people to try and increase because we're losing out on 300 transfers a year. And that's not including what life, like regarding what we're doing. So that's just going on transfers. So we'll need to increase our staff just to keep up with more transfers.
So you're losing 300 transfers a year? Is that staffing or is that?
Staffing.
That was kind of bread and butter, wasn't it?
It was, and we still, we're taking quite a lot of transfers.
Yeah.
So we're probably taking about 1,000 transfers a year. But we just can't keep up with the transfers and we had to cut staff. Just not finding the staff. We're probably the home service that has no problem finding staff, I have a waiting list of people. But it's just, we don't have the budget or the money to get the staff. Even if we get the transfers, we're not getting the money we should. So on a typical transfer, if you think we're only getting 20% of that, it's not enough to compensate. We're only allowed to build so much. We can't build individual items. We build for mileage based, that's it. So it's all in one package and then they're not paying. A lot of times when we go to places like Fargo, Bismarck, you don't pay to grab works. So we lose out on, like we take a transfer for mine out to Fargo, it costs us money to go. So we lose $300 per transfer, just for the way that they pay. So we are, we're at our knees as every ambulance in North Dakota is right now, a lot of them are shutting down. We're looking for support right now and just to let you guys know that we're doing this. It might be going to line of credit until we can get this ambulance faster to uprise in 2025. I accept the letter, hopefully everybody received it and kind of goes into what we'll be doing. And the reasons why for it.
Have an idea how much, how many mills that you're gonna be needing from Ramsey County?
That will be sitting down with you guys once, because I have a company coming in and just basically looking out for that tax or support will do. And they've been able to fluctuate it throughout the years. Let's say all of a sudden, they start paying 100% of our bills, hopefully. So we're receiving almost even 70%. Then they'll look at it and say, let's take ambulance mill or district down to quarter of a mill this year. Perfect, that's what I'm hoping for. Is that they were able to fluctuate up and down and up and down. So if we have a place like we are now, we can increase it, but when it goes back to normal, they can decrease it. CMS is doing a kind of a trial right now where they had us report all of our cost data. And with that cost data, they're actually seeing how much it costs for our ambulances, because it's just not North Dakota. It's every place in the United States. New York paramedics are on strike because they're making lessons over to that result. So I mean, it's just every place you look, it's, they're all closing. So CMS is looking at the reimbursement model, seeing if they have to increase it. So this might be just a temporary thing. And then down the line, just keep it at like a one mill, two mills. Whenever it will be, the ambulance district board will have the control of that. So they can look at what we're making financing and decide what taxpayers need to help with.
So what are these hospitals and clinics and all this doing with the ambulance service code for these other places?
Some of the hospitals are making their own ambulance services for transport only. So they're using basically shuttle vans to transport.
So they're not responding to a medical emergencies?
Some do, like Alster does. Sanford owns up and most of your bigger cities, Alster are qualified, the hospitals. Which is kind of not the best model to go off of. Because it's still a broad issue, like a lot of their equipment, a lot of their staff, it's all minimal. It's kind of like for profit ambulance services, they put minimum staff, they put minimum equipment. And they're to make a profit. Most of your ambulance services are city, like fire departments or they're nonprofit organizations that work for the community.
And you're looking at possibly going to a vote next June on something like that?
Yes, so we're looking, I'll know more by August 8th, but I want to keep you guys know, move from step by step. Once we have the meeting, can you be in on all those meetings? And we'll find out exactly when we're gonna go for it and if it's gonna be special election versus non-special election. It's not just me, it's gonna be the whole Northeast.
Well, next year is an election year, so there'll be a primary in June and then general in November.
Yeah.
So. Keep that on, keep her on your good side. And, okay. Let's jump into your training center ask.
So from the training center, we're just finishing up, received some funds from the city to start remodeling the old building. We've started some of that, we have another meeting coming up on the 16th with the board of directors to see which way we're gonna go for that, and looking at different avenues for income for it. Expanding a little bit, I have been talking with LSU and Texas A&amp;M coming up here. And they'll be utilizing the sites of a camp raft and the training center as well. So we're trying to get more education up here. These sites don't have things for homeland security, they have no training up north. So they're trying to make, we're trying to make the Lake Region Northern Training Center. Cause a lot of people from Louisiana don't know how to act in snow. So we're, we're gonna use our strength of having bad weather and bring people up here for training. And we'll have training in the summers as well, most of the camp rafting. That's a lot of the winter stuff, classroom stuff, we're hoping to intertwine with this training center. So we're looking at different avenues for getting income. We were asking for help with the remodel projects. I gave you a wants and needs list. And we're just looking for what we need to do to get it up and running. Any questions on that? We approached it before and we were just, we just kind of tabled it.
Well, I guess my big question is how do we make a financial viable? Or is this gonna be an ongoing commitment that you'd be looking at?
I'm very much hoping that it's not gonna be an ongoing. Once we get it up and running, we're looking at different revenue sources to try and keep it operational. Then goes to get enough that we can offer a lot more training to a lot of our first responders. Adam with the first response around the college. I'm working with the college right now to do something for the whole state. So we can have a EMS training center for North Dakota based here. From EMR all the way up to critical care care management. The college has started a community care paramedic program, they're working with me on that one. So it's a source that they can actually come to the center and use the center. So working with the college with that, just not Lake Region, the whole state. So different financial things like that, we're trying to get, so we can use it as a hub for training.
If you're involved in the college, what do you need in the classroom for?
It's not the classroom, they're doing a community. They don't have anything for outside clinical. So we can go into the classroom and we can do CPR, we can do the labs, we can work on the dummies. But when it comes to actually getting the field work, then you have to get in the field and actually do work. You can't train on the fire department by sitting in the classroom all the time. You have to actually get out in the field and work the pumbers.
Right, but what's the training center offer, the college does?
It's gonna offer an ambulance, it's gonna offer a community care paramedic vehicle. We'll have the equipment based all of there, so it's not associated with ambulance service.
Wasn't that a little extorted then?
Explain, please.
So they have to, they have to write, they have to get field experience, correct?
Let me put it this way, so if you have a fire school here and are you sending all the students to learn on your equipment at the fire home? Learn the students, you can have them all go work on fire trucks and have work, grab the pumbers, grab the, and learn how to dress with your equipment, do an examination with your equipment. That puts up quite a bit of liability for the fire department, correct?
Yes.
So now that they went to the training, you have them at school, they've gone through all the equipment.
So this is just classroom type stuff?
Yeah.
Not the actual?
Not the actual, yes. So they'll be going through all the stuff, that's not ours, that's the training centers, before they actually go and do ride-alongs. And the ride-alongs will not just be, that was like, they'll be probably. So that's why we're trying to get it together, so I can have somebody from Bismarck come up here, Mike who's going to Williston, Williston, so everybody except for fire. It's in on us. And that's just one thing, that's one thing I've been working on with the board, we're trying to get more entities involved.
It looks all operational or whatever, it basically pays itself and that for that.
Yeah. And like I said, then we'll be looking to expand it, I'd like to tell to expand it a little bit so we can add more to it. So this is straightforward, twenty years, twenty-five years, that we could start, you know, on its own, trying to say, well, if you get a bigger facility, it starts taking off. So this is just a small facility to look in the long run and possibly build bigger.
So what are the plans for the other entity, like fire service or search and rescue? You got any work for that?
Yes, so that's what I said in the twenty twenty five year. So law enforcement will be using it quite heavily. That classroom will be where they can use their train for hand-to-hand combat, things like that. They'll have their strike dummies down there. Of course, the classroom, they don't have any classrooms, same sort of classroom. So during the winter months, gives them a place they can actually get together, like we do at the fire department. And so they can actually have a meal and sit on the train together. The future plan is the expansion will be more for, of course, geared for law enforcement, for some of their vehicles that they would use possibly for SWAT, things like that. And a little bit bigger training area. The twenty-year model is to get, is to get a bigger facility that is most likely gonna be tied closer to the college. To try to get, we already have PRT out there, I'm trying to get EMS out there, I'm trying to get fire help there as well. So we want to have all first responders training done in that region. Right, but what's the closest college for fire right now? Williston does their own, mine does their own.
Well, he's gonna pour his head of trash and give students an eight-year program.
So the paramedic program. So that's why we've been trying to join together with some of the things, so we're trying to get the same type of model for fire as well. Where you've got all these different cities that are doing their own thing. So if I put training at Williston and I went to Bismarck, the training is completely different. So we're trying to, I'm starting with the EMS level. We're trying to be the fire level where if you went to training in Williston, you have the same training as somebody at Grant Forbes, same instructor type things. We're using Ivan and onsite training. I'm trying to make those like one of those hubs. So the training center would be one first responder hub for the whole Northeast.
Which you'll never get away from. The basics are always the basics, but every city or every fire department turns to their S O G, the trouble is different.
Correct, correct, same with ambulance service. But you have your standard of care, that's always has to be the same for the whole state. And that's where it starts, the standard. And then they can go to the S O Gs from different services. Fire is a little bit more complicated than EMS as far as training wise, so that's why that one's been a little bit more difficult. But yeah, the end goal is to get all first responders into one area for this whole region and institution.
Anything else, Sean?
No, this is kind of a formality, so. Anything else?
No.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you so much for coming in. Brenda, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Brenda Burge, the executive director of Amachi. You're to ask for some funding.
We did. So I'll just give you an update on the shelter. You guys, a few messages from me. So we continue to be full almost every single day. We have twelve beds and one side is female and the other side is male. And we have one family room. And it's, sometimes it's a little lonely because they are turning people away. And so, questions for me and really answered.
And we're asking for how many dollars?
Twenty-five thousand. So what we also provide besides the bed is we have laundry there and we also have staff who helps to find employment in permanent housing. So some of the barriers with the permanent housing, of course, is if they have a felony or they have bad rental history, then they are staying at the shelter a lot longer. We have people stay up till four months. And the average one stays fifteen days. So right now, in the last sense, we're able to help thirty-six percent of the people staying get into permanent housing and sixty-eight percent to find employment. So we're now costing us about sixty-five hundred dollars a night, top rate.
Where is this holding located?
So it's in the old mall that you're visiting, very across from the Catholic Church. So we use the back door, the alley door, easily separated. There's kitchen facilities there as well, so and we partner with the health center for food. So that's where it begins from. We have them prepare their own meals. Except we have one of staff that works weekends and she was close to a lot of special day cocktails and things like that that last them a while. So, so I think we've been very successful. But in order to keep moving forward, we need some funding.
Anything else?
Questions?
Any questions for Brenda?
So we also work with the state H M I system, which is a database system, so we input everybody who's stayed there. And we can, so if you have questions, we can easily answer. There's the age, approximately age, how many males, how many females, how many families. But we also permit them to do that. And what that also does is it creates a system so that if people are hopping from shelter to shelter, onto town, then we know. I think it's amazing that people that need shelter, it's not, you know, sometimes I think there's that stigma that is that very much downrooting people and it's not, we have people who are making twenty dollars an hour that are staying in the shelter that they cannot get into permanent housing because of their rental history or that with felony. So they're working construction making twenty plus dollars an hour. And so what we do with that is the first three to five days is an emergency shelter and after that we do ask them to pay a society fee scale. And it's done nationwide. It's done in other shelters in the state, it was done with previous shelter, previous administration of the shelter. And so it's a society fee scale, so we sit down and we ask them what they can pay. So somebody that's making twenty dollars an hour is gonna pay maybe twenty dollars a day for someone who's working at Taco John's making eight dollars an hour, it's gonna be ten dollars a day. So, so we do, we want them to be affordable and we also don't want to make them, we want them to run and have sustainable housing.
And you're, the good thing about what Brenda is doing over there is they're having their residents take a little bit of responsibility, not just, you know, maid service, they're cleaning up their own spots or cooking that meal, they're all looking for jobs or doing the things that we can do to help them out, become.
And it is a hundred percent silver. So we do have a paracolizer, we also drug test, so if we suspect and obviously there is doubt. Sometimes people ask us about that and it's for safety reasons. You know, for the staff and the other people who are staying, there are children at times. And so, you know, we try to, we do that as well. We have calls, since the CRU closed, we have calls from the ER that ask people to detox. And we don't detox, we don't have staff to do that, you need a nurse to do them. And we get calls a lot from the police department. So if, for a long time rather than calling the shelter directly, they call my cell phone, so my cell phone, we're new to AM, four AM, five AM. So, and we work with them, so I know that is very much appreciated by law enforcement that we have shelter in town. And it's not always residents from here that stay a lot, or we have people who are coming here from New York, all kinds of states that will stay a couple nights and then hop out and turn and go somewhere. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Brenda?
I should add, I forgot. So the tribe had a shelter for a while and it closed in May with no notice, they just like that case it's closed and we had lots of people coming in. And I don't know if they want to reopen or not, but so we did house it quite a few days Americans, but it's not really too expensive.
Anything else, Brenda?
I don't think so, unless there are questions.
Doesn't look like it. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Melody, welcome.
Thank you.
Between Melody and Brenda, I was wishing that their community didn't need your service sort of button.
Yeah, unfortunately our numbers keep going. So I had sent a letter in with the stats that we had provided for two thousand twenty-two and then what I had currently had as of June thirtieth. I'd like to explain a little bit on the stats and then the services that we've provided. So as of January first of two thousand twenty-three to current day today, we actually have had two hundred and seventy-six crisis calls. Thirteen families in shelter with one thousand six hundred and sixty-seven bed nights. Ninety-three victims in domestic violence, sixteen victims of sexual assault. Out of those sixteen, we've done eight runs of medical exams. We've done sixteen presentations with three hundred and four participants. So if you notice, our numbers have already increased from what I told you from June. And we've actually superseded our bed nights from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three for shelter. State provides supervised visitation and exchanges. We do offender treatment program for men and women. We have support group for teens and women, adult. We do forensic interviews for four years old and up. Forensic medical exams for the sexual assaults and that's from baby to adult. We have state nurses that are pediatric and adult certified to do those exams. We have a food pantry, a supply closet to give hygiene products and whatnot with. We do crime victim witness, which we collaborate with Ramsey County State Attorney's Office along with the other state's attorneys in the six counties that we serve, which is Ramsey, Benson, Nelson, Towne, Bell's, Eddie, I think I'm off. We do emergency shelter, which is a thirty-day stay. Anything beyond that, we put them into transitional housing, which they can stay up to twenty-four months. And we, we're certified through the North Dakota State Supreme Court Rule thirty-four as domestic violence advocates. So we provide domestic violence and sexual assault advocacy along with being able to do protection orders. We're not able to do disorderly conduct restraining orders, but we can do protection orders and sexual assault restraining orders. Any questions?
What happens to the families, the individuals that get turned away because of occupancy restrictions? Do you have?
We refer them to either the homeless shelter, the Quota Prairie Community Action Agency or other shelters in the state. We had two, I think it was two unmet last year for over oh seven, seven families were denied due to capacity or there was no hotel rooms available for us to put them in, so then we had to find other placement for them.
Well, like I said, it saddens me that there's a need for your services. I'd like to put you out of a job, but I appreciate what you do. And then do you have a fundraiser this afternoon?
Yes, we have the National Night Out where we do the food for free will offering.
Yeah. And that's at City Plaza tonight, starting at five?
Four thirty.
Four thirty.
Yeah. Four thirty to eight, is that correct? Yeah.
Okay. Well, again, appreciate you coming in, appreciate what you do. Asking for sixteen, but you'd like more if we can find it.
Yes. Please and thank you. And here's my cards too, if you guys want to.
Anybody have any questions for Melody? Anything else for us? Oh, thank you again so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Fieldson.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll try and burn through this so we have questions, but. Our, staying on our projects, our paper packages, they weren't gonna start last week, but due to weather changes and their schedules, they got put off for a little while, so it'll be probably first part of this month. Any questions on that? Bridges and color work, we do have all three of the bridges torn out now and recalled back in. Started working on our color sites now this week. The big seven, string of seven colors is the one we're working on this week. And that will be done this week, so harvest can get through there. And then the rest of the color projects, it's just be one or two day type things. So it won't affect harvest hardly at all. Any questions on that? Our gravel projects, we've got about five of them this summer, so it's a big year, but I talked to the guy this morning and they're thinking about starting Thursday. And they'll be starting over in that lot in Brockett area with our projects in that area. So, and then they're just gonna keep right on going until they get done. It'll probably take them close to a month, as much as they have to do. Three weeks, I think. Any questions on that? Okay, one of our town trucks and welds on the hoist broke loose and we had to take its wings to get fixed. They ended up taking a hoist clear out of the box to do it, so it cost, the cost was three thousand one hundred and seven dollars and forty-four cents. I don't know if you can get prior approval on this one, but we didn't realize it was gonna cost that much either, so looking for more. Looking for motion to pay that invoice. So we'll do proof. Second.
So we have a motion in a second to go ahead and repay it. Just one roll call.
Yes.
Roll call.
Otis?
Aye.
Willhomy?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Yes, sir?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye. Motion carries.
And then, as you know, currently we're renting an excavator from Ironhide and we got the invoice for the first six weeks. So that invoice was seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-six cents. We haven't had a quite six-week check, but we anticipate having that one, so. Looking for a motion to pay that invoice.
So move.
Second.
Motion in a second to go ahead and pay Ironhide for the excavator rental, seven thousand nine seventy-one sixty-six. Roll call, please.
Yes, sir?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Otis?
Aye.
Willhomy?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye. Motion carries.
And we got a bunch of culverts from TruNorth to deal for that site, seven culvert site. They have two other county roads that were doing this somewhere yet. So now we have all our culverts here that we are putting in this somewhere. But that invoice for those last bunch was seventy-one thousand forty dollars and two cents. Looking for a motion to pay that invoice.
So move. Second.
We have a motion in a second to go ahead and pay TruNorth for the culverts for the projects this summer. Seventy-one thousand forty dollars and two cents, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Volk?
Aye.
Otis?
Aye.
Yes, sir?
Aye.
Willhomy?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye. Motion carries.
Uh, the company that does our dust control for us, Craig's Dust Control, has got that project done now. And he sent us the invoice. Now that, that total is, uh, twelve thousand five seventy-three forty-five, which is a hundred percent of the bill. Um, we collect twenty-five percent from the local homeowners, so that'll be a credit as we get invoices back. But the invoice from Craig's Dust Control is twelve thousand five seventy-three forty-five. So we're looking for a motion to pay that bill.
So move.
Go ahead.
Motion in a second to go ahead and pay Craig's Dust Control for the nag water. Uh, twelve thousand five seventy-three forty-five. Roll call, please.
Yes, sir?
Aye.
Otis?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Willhomy?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye. Motion carries.
Uh, next, uh, Ramsey County three up by Hammond, just, just a little ways south of the county line. On east side of town, there's a culvert that's rusted completely out. We weren't aware of it before we paved. This is the first time the water's actually been gone out of that area for a long time for years. Which you can really see the culvert now. And that's a long burger, it's a hundred and twenty feet long. So the plan is to put one of those, uh, polycoded culverts back in its place. They last a little bit longer. And that will cost just under six thousand six hundred and fifty. So I'm looking for a motion to go ahead and order, not pay whatever order.
That'll be installed this year yet?
No, it'll probably be next summer now, 'cause it takes a little while to build them. But there's no water there now, I don't know why. Somebody else doing drainage.
Do we have a year and see if we have to need it?
Good question. I should talk to the right personnel, probably, does he, uh?
Move to, uh, order the culvert.
Second. How big is that culvert, like, round?
Twenty-four inch. It's like huge.
We have a motion in a second to go ahead and approve order in the culvert for Ramsey three. Uh, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And as you probably know, I put an ad in the paper looking for, are we finally got the? Go ahead, we start doing our emergency repair jobs from two thousand twenty-two. So our first step is to ask for an engineering, or look for an engineering firm that can do the design and engineering. So we put the ad in the paper, it goes in today. Um, there's four projects that we can advertise for the engineering. We'll all have separate contracts, but we can use the same engineer. So this is a bunch of loops that we have to jump through all in order. And this is the first loop we have to jump through. We have to have a motion to, uh, look for an engineering firm. So that's what I'm asking for a motion to advertise the engineer.
I will move.
Second.
Motion in a second to go ahead and advertise for an engineer for the emergency repair projects from two thousand twenty-two. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Well, the next two, we need to set up a committee that reviews the engineering proposals. And there has to be a motion in our minutes stating who is on that interview. Last time we did this, it was myself, uh, Blaine and Joe. And they don't tell you how many they have to have, it just has to be a fair type of interview. Anybody can go on, all five of you can go on if you want. I think it's the last time we did this, the other three were, it was the timing was perfect, the other three missions were going on, so.
Have any idea when that's gonna take place?
The proposals will due the twenty-third, I believe, so shortly after that. We have to advertise twenty-one days.
So that lasts week in August.
Yeah. This is kind of a long-term affair, it takes three weeks advertising for this, then it'll take another couple weeks to do the interview. Then it'll take three to four weeks for them to design the projects, all four of them, then go to bid. So we're definitely looking at next year for these, for these open cuts are on from twenty, twenty-two. Don't have an open letter or like, hopefully. I am. I am pretty small, so yeah.
So basically all you need is?
I just need a committee.
Committee.
Motion stating two is on.
I can be honored to give the.
Pretty painful. It is really painful, so. It just takes time.
Yeah.
So the committee would be Commissioner Willhomy, Commissioner Volk and yourself. Okay. Do we have that in the form of a motion?
I will move.
Okay.
Second.
Motion in a second to set up a committee to interview the engineer, uh, firms that advertise or submit, uh, proposals. Of Commissioner Volk, Commissioner Willhomy, and Superintendent Highways, Kevin Fieldson. Further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Always same sign.
Okay, the last thing I have is, uh, North Dakota Telephone Company submitted an application for a utility permit to bury fiber optic line. In Ramsey County two, uh, the quarry road all the way from Alp Street into the city limits of Curry. Um, I went over the project with the, with North Dakota Telephone Company and they're perfectly willing to adjust their plans. They need to, like, inform their home, our mail lines and our sexual agrooms, so I don't see a problem with the application issued. So I'm looking for a motion to approve that permit. I will defer to the permit.
Second. Motion in a second to go ahead and approve the permit for North Dakota Telephone Company. Further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
That's all I have, unless you have something to add.
The detour up on, you do the bridge up the port?
There's no detours up, I'm on the final line. But we will be laying an extra. I mean, we maintain the one we think they'll be using.
How long did you say that progress will take, you think?
About a month, maybe three weeks of the road being closed.
And when does that happen?
I believe end of August, first part of September, they'll be starting. First week or two is the week that it won't be closed, they gotta do some, work on the channel.
That'd be crazy. What, uh, don't you think it's gonna be crazy up there?
Probably.
Let's just make sure that we communicate with the people around there, so.
Right.
Everybody has a heads up.
Actually, in reality, the roads around there aren't arched, I mean, they're good roads, so. But you know, it's, they get bingy.
Would just be like seven miles around it or?
One, two, maybe four, maybe five. I don't know that, but it's not that much.
You think it's east side, northeast?
Yeah.
That's on Ramsey four, correct?
Yes.
Any, uh, reason why that area around Fenster School is still a different speed limit?
It's where those curves were designed for speed.
Okay.
Safety. And they would not let us change that.
Jet set?
Yeah. We asked them.
That road improvement over there looks good.
Yeah.
Hey, I guess now it's Fenster's way.
Yeah.
They actually stock fish in there.
Well, that's right.
And they did looking at, uh, stocking fish and they were, it started in, was it twenty-fourteen? They did perch and northern and walleye. And now the norvans are estimated to be minimum of five pounds. So it's a fish. I didn't realize we're paying taxes on lake, but now what? That's where my great grandparents, they inherited it, it's over there. Now, so. Been in the first family for quite some time, but. And I didn't realize they designated it a lake instead of a school. But it's on Game and Fish's website as a lake. And can stock the fish, so. But anyway, the drum looks good over there, straight and turned out nice.
It's starting to open, I think.
Yep. Anything else for Kevin? Kevin, anything else for us?
No.
And if not, uh, thank you so much for your time and, uh, thank you guys for everything they do. Appreciate them. Well, Ms. Candy, I'm gonna jump into out of the budget.
Okay. Um, we'll start with page one. Buzz threw them off. Um, Commissioner's budget, um, it was the four percent for salaries. Um, and I left everything else the same. So just a change there. Um, page two. I left everything the same. I left, um, ten thousand for attendance here. Um, I think we need to hold a discussion. Do we need to keep that in there or if it's just done?
It no longer being utilized?
That amount was paying for the rent at the school for the deaf. Um, and I believe that it is no longer.
What was that for?
Attendance care. Um.
Kids.
For. Misbehaved students.
We don't have any misbehaved students.
Um, yeah, I just, I don't know where, I don't know where, um, social services was running it. With them and the sheriff's department, I mean, I don't know what. They couldn't get workers, they couldn't get, they were using their workers.
So we haven't been paid, right?
No, no, it, it's, it's done. Everything's been dealt.
So this money's been going to the general after?
Yes. So you can see like twenty-two, you know, we only, we only did like a partial year.
Right.
Neville, have a conversation or have Rhonda come in and?
You know where housing is up there? No. Grand Forks. Just transported to Grand Forks.
It's one of those.
So that transfer to Grand Forks, that eating of ten thousand? Is that something that we need to use on his or, or rob it out of his budget too, what this is supposed to be paying? I'm, I'm just asking, I don't, I don't know.
This, this was just paying rent.
Oh, this was just rent?
Yeah. It wasn't.
It wasn't like a.
There was a staff or?
No, no. Because the staff were, you know, being paid through social services. Here, right. For, um, this is my budget. Um, did the salary increases that were recommended. And I left everything else the same. Not to date on computer, so I don't need any of that.
That's me, that's basically, that's where she's at. This is where she works.
Yeah, 'cause I didn't put her name in.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That's my notes to put it in the computer. Um, eleven. Different types of insurance. Um, the life insurance, that is the, um, I believe that is the twenty-eight cents. For county employee that, um, pays. Um, the next one, I just got an email this morning. Um, and Kevin, part of that, I think part of that comes out of your budget, the workers comp.
Yeah, that's a big part of it.
Yeah. So it went from an estimate of twenty-four thousand to forty. What? But yours is half, like, yours is just half. Yeah. And that's claims.
Yeah.
Yeah. Eleven. Yeah, oh yeah, so the sixteen, the sixteen thousand I changed to, um. Cover half and then Kevin's would be the other. That'd be twenty.
You're right, have that enough for that, for your budget, if you're trying to have it?
Yeah.
So that sixteen should be twenty now?
Yes.
I would, I would, I would think all my workers are more at risk from being out on the highway working. They're more at risk than they have at home. They're at home.
Well, I'm just saying, just make sure that you have it in your, so you're not short.
Right.
Like I said, I just, I just got it this minute, so. We can check on Kevin's budget, see if he's got enough.
Forty-two thousand.
And that's just, that's just an estimate.
Well, usually their estimate's probably pretty close.
Yeah.
You said you had forty-two thousand.
Forty-two thousand.
So you got more than that covered? That's just the workforce cover, sorry.
Yes. So you have enough?
Forty-two thousand.
Oh, yeah, you should.
Yeah.
I think we've kept it at that for a while, just. Okay. Um, then the next page, the eleven A, that's the Association of County Dues. Um, and that would be, um.
Same, same as last year, fourteen?
Yes. I'm gonna go to page thirteen. These are, um, the building insurance, the vehicle insurance. Um, and in the memo that came from the Association of Counties, they estimated like a five percent increase. So that's what I figured.
Mm-hmm, just to make sure you're covered?
Yep. Um, the next page, legal, um, that's like all the publishing in the paper. Um, yeah. Very nice, very nice to have it.
Yeah.
Back home. Instead of.
I'm surprised that's only kind of valid.
Where, wherever we were dealing with, yeah. It's, it's, that's basically minutes bills.
Yeah.
Um, and then we.
That's all.
We cut. Like when we advertised for a job, we used to put just a big, um, so we reduced that to, um. Like to visit our county website and then all the information is on the county website. So it cut down on spending for. But I left, I left that the same. Um, the next page is the North Dakota Water Dues, that's two hundred dollars every year. Next page is postage, um. Um, postage increased, next year is an election. I usually spend almost exactly what's there or a little over.
Especially last year.
Um, I don't know if. Forty-two should be. That's also, um. That's postage, that's supplies, like the ink. Um, usually a big, big ink cartridge lasts us. Six, seven months, roughly. Those are expensive. Um, also the lease for the copier, pardon copier, the postage machine. Um, will be, will be up in March of next year.
How long is that lease due by November?
Usually five. Um, so I reached out to the people that we currently have our lease through. Um, and I got some figures. Um. In our lease, we're getting a, we would be getting a newer machine, faster machining for less on our lease.
Not still within the forty-two thousand?
Yes. Yes. So I haven't. I haven't really committed to anything that, that I have.
So you can't go, can't go without it?
Right, right. I just need to work out timeframe of. To switch everything over to, um, and it's the, like the exact same as what we already have. It's just a five years new. Um, then we go to the copier. So this covers. So covers the Highway Department, the Sheriff's Department that we added. It covers the State's Attorney's Office. It covers the County Agent's Office. And it covers first floor. So we have a, um. What, in the Tax Director's Office, there is one across the hall that is shared between the Recorder, the DSO. And then there's one in between, um, the Treasurer's Office and mine. And that's. It works well because you can scan email, you can.
Overall, that's not that bad. Or maybe departments you cover.
And we did, we, I mean, we, we moved things around because the, like the bigger copier was across the hallway. Well, between the Treasurer's Office and mine, we are the ones who are doing the bigger volume. So then we just switched and it, it works fine. We like who we, you know, we like who we go with, um, Central Business Systems out of Jamestown. They're, they're great people to, you know, they just come through to visit somebody else and they'll stop in for, you know. Two, three minutes just to say hi, need anything, you know. They can, they can see what is on that machine from there. So when toner gets low, you know, all of a sudden he'll show up at the counter and be like, oh, here's your toner, I'm like. Okay. So. Yep. Technology. Um. The next page is election. Um. There's a few changes. Um, I don't believe that we will be going with. With the Minneapolis Printing Company anymore. I believe it's going to be all under one company so that they do our, um. Voting machines, they do our, it's ESNS, so it's, it's, everything is just gonna be under one. So. I think I have a pretty good stock. Um. I know I'll have to order because it will be a presidential. But this covers, um. The elections, applies that we needs, the ballots, the. The programming, the postage, the paying of the election workers. Yeah. So that covers, um. And I've gotten more requests from people, they, they just, they don't want to be paid, they just want to volunteer their time. So I've been, you know. Gracious of that and, yeah. It works good, so it takes a little bit of, you know. And Louise from the Journal likes to be the greeter at, at the door. So. That takes care of those. Um, which seventeen. Um, mental health expense, coroner, um, I left those the same. Um, the audit fees, I left the same. Um, this year we probably will go over because the, twenty-twenty-two, they were behind in auditing. So this year we are doing two years. I don't click that, but. Um. I think that we're, we should be done like in the next month or two with everything. And then we should be back to one year.
That was due to the COVID or what?
Um, that was due to, um, all the funding that the counties got for ARPA. Um, and that there were so many. Guidelines and things that you couldn't do and then things changed and then, yeah, so it's. It took a lot of time for them to, so, um. And luckily for us, you know, we didn't, we didn't spend any of our money until starting this year, so. Yeah.
Yeah.
They were very glad to hear that, so.
Mental health is for what?
Uh. Mental health budget, um, that comes from.
Go to village.
The, the, um.
Name.
Nope, um, no, that comes out of something else. Um.
But where does it go, where is it, what's it for?
Is that yours? I can't remember. Um. I'm trying to blank. Okay, we'll go back to that. Coroner is obviously when, um. Jackie requests to have a autopsy done. On the counties portion. Take that page. Um, county fair. Um, they request the dollar amount equal, equivalent to one mil. Next page.
Is that over a mil though? They probably did one mil, right?
They probably did one, yep. County building improvements. Um, that's things that need to be done around the building. Um, I don't know if Roger heard back anything about like replacing lights, how much that's. But we have plenty left in this year's to do, to do stuff. And he, he said a hundred thousand and I said a hundred and fifty thousand for next year because I know that there's something that. Will always come about. Um. Next page, health insurance. Dental and vision. Um, yeah.
Quite a little rage.
There is, I did include towards the back part, um. Of like the, the. High dollar claims that we had. Which raised our. You know, so what, I mean, just like the top one, I mean, it was over five hundred thousand. So. And that's where the increase or the decrease comes in based upon claims that have been throughout the year. You also have to remember that we are a.
Self-funded.
Self-funded group. So there are nomels that are used to pay for health insurance for dental or vision. Leaping on that one.
For your question, you look at some of this, sort of, this work was compromised.
No.
That's good.
No. Nothing? Yeah. Um, eighteen E. This is the FICA, um, any curves, the portion that the employer pays. Um, I did put in the figure for the increase that would start January one, I believe. And the employer portion is going to increase by one percent.
That's a lot better than you would care.
Um, the next page, so this is your miscellaneous general. Um, I did a breakdown of. Um, different things that come out of. That portion of money. And I also put little slot to give you pricing on the software requests that we had. That is our taxing and hero program.
Gonna replace the code programs.
That will be ending December thirty first of twenty twenty five.
Some of that in factometry here. Where that will be used like that and part of the.
Yeah, yeah, that's when they have that presentation, yeah.
That was word of view. And we made a decision on that.
Uh-uh.
There's project.
That's just the requested amount.
Big commentary was over three years, right? Was that a problem?
Hmm. I just went off.
A lot of thinking, right? Cause this is where we needed to make a decision. The city kind of wanted to get involved, I remember.
I just went off the. Post as she that.
Yeah, right.
Which was like a hundred and seventy two thousand.
Depending on which avenue we would go with.
Yeah.
So that hundred and fifty thousand on the top includes what you've got, that's miscellaneous general.
Not, not the software, yeah. That's why I just talked requests.
This planning zone, would that be the planning commission?
Yeah, that's what we. Need to discuss. Let me talk right now. Page twenty is the D E S grant, um. This is the amount figured to pay the um. Multi hazard mitigation plan.
Where were you sitting with that?
Um, there is a balance of nineteen thousand three ninety seven.
Yep. Is the plan completed?
Nope.
Nope.
Nope, and I have an outstanding bill that they don't email me anymore now. Um, thirteen thousand one fifty seven.
But the plan is not yet complete, the project's not yet complete.
So I responded that, you know. The bill will not be. Paid into the project is complete. You have to ask Chris. I think it needs to go further, I think it. I think we need to get the seats turning up. Cause I don't know, I don't know how many extensions he's done. So that we don't. So that we don't lose out on funding, we don't.
We'll just ask Chris if he could come up. What was he down here?
Um, yeah, so that's why I didn't.
She working pretty good.
No, not today. I didn't budget anything.
I don't think this should owe anything. So when's this gotta be, when's it gonna be, you know that?
Probably a year ago.
Uh-huh.
Would he ask for the extensions or whatever?
You have to ask for an extension every three, three.
I think every three months.
Three months, three months or six months.
Well, how far, who they came out, yeah, what did he do?
Um. I know one day when Paul was here. And he must have went back and said something, you know, to go a little bit further.
Paul had done. Well, if you don't do this. I think they're short staffed, I think, I don't know.
Well, it's that one guy that's been doing it and that's where the problem has lied for, for some time.
So theoretically, the money on hand in this account should cover. So do we need Chris to push that or is it, we're talking state attorney or what do we?
Um, like.
Ash bowl anyway, see where. What do you think?
I think it needs to go.
So far as budget for the same. We can have that discussion. Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't feel the need to budget anything for next year. You know, every bill that I've gotten that, I mean, there's, there's no penalty, there's no, it's just, this is what you owe. Telling me how many days later, I know. And then you can see the last one that I got was the end of. Hey. Not one since. So.
So it says we're a hundred and twenty days delaying, but we haven't received any updates from the plan. And so we're not paying it.
Right.
Okay. But you're put to call me in jeopardy for not having that plan done. Um, if you don't have your hazard mitigation plan done and approved by the state. Makes you ineligible for prima monies in the future, so. I think it's not something that we can continue to be not having a plan approved by the state on.
And I don't before you put this in, but then he talked.
Oh. All right. I suppose if we start denying him um. Engineering services for a highway department, maybe I would. Light the fire where it needs to be lit. I'm not sure, I'd hate to put that on Paul because Paul's provided a great service or. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like two different divisions.
It it has two different divisions, one company, two different divisions, so.
Something higher than it's getting to the top.
Yeah.
Potential millions of dollars.
So, here. Um, thirty one, I didn't budget anything. Cause we have. Budgeted anything for five years, four years. Um, last page thirty four, this is the bond, um. That covers the. Bond payment, the interest. Um. And it was for the. Well, the.
Verity projects though.
Um. What more did we, we cover that?
Range you can with it?
Was it ten?
No, no, the hundred percent.
Yeah.
It was like uh two by the football coach, I can't think of the name.
Omen.
Omens, we did Dexter Slough, we did the one just east of the. Grand Avenue or under the door, it was like four of them, little ones.
We thought we have to pay back that money that we.
We should be, oh, I got you.
Should pay, yeah.
It's like a eighty twenty match, we had to come up with a twenty match, but didn't have. Some sold bonds. Yeah, yeah, so how much is longer, is this one?
It's just. It's every year.
So how long, yeah, just.
That's, well, I, he hasn't responded back to my comment, so I wanted to. Find out like how much is left, how much is left.
Right, best of the mess, yeah, we could get that up, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Put that on there to email them again.
So it looks to you in our log, then we'll be pages.
That's true, yeah.
Well, maybe in two thousand eleven, so maybe twenty twelve, we got the one, just testing.
And the eighty usually that covers. There's like a four hundred and thirty six dollar. To call it a bond fee. As opposed for them to watch over it. But. I will get um breakdown of what's left.
Thanks, David.
And that was it?
I'm done.
All right.
So we need to put a plan in, do I need to do that, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Yep.
Last time it's thirty fifty thousand?
I think it was.
Last, the last, the last start for the project.
I think so, maybe it was forty.
Cause we get forty five thousand, that's what you have so far.
How much would you like?
Well, I think we got thirty fifty, cause we're basically certain.
Hmm.
That's the only thing that was not felt on yours, Ken, was just that, lonely, right? Otherwise it was all good. You wanted fifty, you figured? Well, it was going on across last night. Forty something last time, wasn't it, so. It's gonna be all that and then some.
Probably say so. Anything else?
The fifty, it'll just be a start.
Hmm.
How long the process is that gonna be? Year or two? I had a little, I had no idea. Wouldn't surprise me if it was a couple of years.
Yeah.
I'm just asking, yeah.
Yeah.
We're starting off in ground zero.
Great.
So you paid a year. January, this is Monday. That's gonna get changed, so.
Yep.
In business? VA abatement? Questions?
Go through proof. Second.
Motion and second to approve the VA abatement? Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye aye.
All the same sign? Approved, uh, special permit.
Go through proof, second. Just the one, right?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, further discussion on the special permit? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Uh, Renaissance Zone Development Plan Division. Mr. Johnson?
Good morning.
Morning, how are you?
Pretty good.
Good.
So this is a pretty simple, uh, sort of kind of a formal step that we have to take. Um, the last legislative session, uh, they allowed another benefit for the Renaissance Zone. Uh, and so we wanna get incorporated into our development plan because we have a project that would already be eligible uh, for that, and so we made just a brief uh, revision to the development plan to incorporate that. We will be doing a more thorough revision of it later in the year, probably sometime over the winter. Uh, but we're part of the process of redoing the development plan is we have to get letters of support from the county and from the school district because it is a property tax relief package, so uh, if you have any questions, we'd be more happy to answer those. Essentially, the benefit extension is right now, if there's a Renaissance Zone project that's eligible for five years, uh, a property tax exemption. If they now, what it adds, if they do at least seventy-five percent investment of true and full value of the property, they're gonna be eligible for up to eight years. And so we've got a project called, I think Toyota, where, uh, they're gonna be totally they're gonna be taking off the old building, putting a new one, they're adding a body shop, it's gonna be like a four million dollar project, so uh, it easily exceeds the requirements for that, and we've the Renaissance Zone Authority would like to give them the opportunity to have that benefit.
And that goes for how many years?
So that would be, uh, it would be eligible for up to eight years, property tax exemption. And that's the, what we're asking for is a letter of support to revise the development plan, to add that as an option within it. And then subsequently, the Renaissance Zone Authority is already looking to approve that project in that capacity.
So I hate to see you have a a simple letter here for us. Go ahead and
That would be sufficient.
Anybody wanna go ahead and make that a motion to go ahead and approve that Renaissance Zone Development Plan? Letter of support?
I'm sure.
Okay. You have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second to go ahead and approve the letter of support for the Renaissance Zone Authority. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye aye.
All the same sign? Motion carries. Anything else, Rob?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, approve twenty twenty-four preliminary budget. Not sure if we have the adequate information that's needed. So it more than likely would need a special meeting. City does not improve their budget until next Monday, the seventh, is that correct? So the eighth or ninth or tenth?
Has to be approved by the tenth.
Has to be approved by the tenth. The eighth or ninth. Uh, morning of the ninth will not work for myself.
So they'll be in town on Monday?
They don't meet till Monday night, so. So it looks like we got one day. Or Wednesday afternoon.
Afternoon works better for me.
Huh?
The afternoon will work better for me.
Afternoon of the
Either, any, any day. Would be better for me.
Okay.
I'm open for whatever. I don't have anything on my calendar. All day either, those days.
Candy? What works for you? Either of? Mr. Otis?
Yeah, I'm good either. It shouldn't be a terrible long meeting, anyway. She'll be everything great in that, everybody except for a couple of documents. People can't produce a document as well. Your budget didn't get approved, I guess. Well, we've got so much time, you know.
Right.
All the heads need, they know that this deadline is here, they're not producing the documents well. You hear that, or you know?
Um, GSO?
GSO? Um.
But I haven't gotten and the city, the s- the city's portion of it is like, it's no dollar amounts, it's just, they give me the mills to put all of it. Is how it works. But I haven't gotten anything from the three schools. Um, yeah.
That's like, it's a mail.
Two, two of the schools have now have new super, superintendents.
They usually don't wait that long, this long, do they?
Making a decision on that software? Um, if that's a three-year or a one-year deal, or
I will talk, that was three. But what about? But that pictometry work in those city?
Yeah. Pictometry, Vanguard, um, Tyler Technologies.
We need to make that decision also on that pictometry, wasn't the city on board to pay half of it?
Well.
Yeah, they wanted a, a tiger.
They wanted a quick, they wanted a quicker timeline, done faster, and on a tighter flight path. And then my thought was utilizing some of our CD money. And some of that, and get that done instead of a three-year, spreading it out over three-year, just do it kind of thing, but.
So how much is that?
Can you do this, or?
Well, my question was, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna do a hundred percent. It'll be done, so it's done.
Right.
Right? About this, and just, to me, it seems like since we've been flooding in from the nineties till now, it just hasn't been a hundred percent done. Where you know, okay, they picked this area, they picked that area, and I get it, there's only two people over there. And if we're gonna do this, we need to have it a hundred percent. Not only to make her life easier, but I think it's gonna make our life easier in the future also. You know?
Right.
What do you think, Jeff?
Yeah, I don't.
We've just been piggy here, piggy there, and it's, it's not working. I mean, there's upset people over the whole situation where I think if we do the hundred percent, there's no winning, saying, well, they got this, this, you got this, and that person got that. It's just a done deal.
Right.
Well, the Tyler technology is a kind of, would they have a choice?
Yeah, that we don't, yeah. And the Vanguard, pictometry, look at. Right.
They would
I think they work together, I mean. The pictometry is the actual calling and taking the pictures and the background was the analysis, some data. Even on the wish you were here helping, even on the they didn't even wanna do anything, even if it was a preview. Wasn't close enough. Window for the, the city, I mean, they're gonna get a bonus off of this too. Right. But they wanted to be more accurate. Here's your cardisality. It's absolutely fair to. They wanted to be on the side. Well, if I had a closer grid. The answers are better. And they want to close up. Use that because they lost all that debt. And that costs more money to do that.
Right.
I mean, depending on, I mean, is it worth to do a, a closer grid if they're willing to put up some money?
Right.
We're, we're probably better off, yeah, if it's another hundred thousand, and they're willing to do half of it. Maybe that's a better. So the pictometry, and the Vanguard, they work together, right? I mean, you use them both.
Yes.
And Vanguard? You want, what happens with that, you get it, you're asking for, uh, more than what you use them for now?
What would be is we would, um, have a desk review done? Where they would have a professional appraiser review all of our property cards? And reevaluate them based off of the information that we currently have, which is quite complete, but if there was anything that they found missing, they could add from the pictometry. That a new building was built that we didn't see, or um, another example where it might come in, um, it's a newer way of using it, is now with the showings and that, where we should be valuing them more as a commercial built building and kind of just doing it as, as a garage, so we can measure doors and overhead doors.
So the whole thing would be a three-year project, right?
Um, the Vanguard thing was kind of going over three years, but I think the actual project would take, if you say, uh, it was a year, less than a year, or from start to finish, wouldn't that work?
The pictometry part of it. It was just the payment of it was over a year.
Yeah, yeah.
Everything else was within a year. I mean, granted, if they were to start getting, they like to go from up, they like to do it in the fall, that's the way he made it sound.
I think the pictometry and Vanguard are separate.
Right.
Yep. So pictometry was, sound like would fly when the streets were off, and then Vanguard would come in half of that.
Of course.
Right. And, and pictometry is something new. The, the Vanguard is something that we already have.
Yep.
Yep, and, but redoing, redoing the
Updating.
Updating the the, all the parcels. Yeah.
It was cheaper to do it all now versus doing one and then have them come back.
So, and those numbers that we have were not the three-year, but all together, or all? Is that correct?
Or the pictometry? Yeah.
Right, technology.
I think that was the whole number.
A hundred and forty-five thousand.
Yeah. Which can be divided up over
Seventy-two thousand.
Three years and, yeah, the city was willing to pay for their share and
But if they would bring it in? If we bring the pictometry in closer?
Right. But
Exactly that correctly.
And that's the and it's not even zoomed it, or even for the city area, it's not ten thousand dollars of the, or a year versus, it's not a huge not half of the just their increased resolution isn't gonna isn't half the project. That, that doesn't, that number included the increased resolution for the city. So, or, and the camp.
They, I believe if I understood right, the city was going down, so people next to it are
Yeah, they, they're paying for
The two miles outside the city that's in common.
But it's
To have that.
Just square miles wise, it's not there's thousands more per county just based on even if the price per county square miles. A third of the cities.
Everybody got that?
Yeah, can we, if we go down for the, we didn't start at four again? That worked?
You wanna do four at, on the ninth, or four on the
Either, I'm just saying, start a little earlier in case it goes down. Are you guys okay?
What do you wanna do? Tuesday, the eighth? Tuesday, the ninth? Eighth, Tuesday, the eighth? Tuesday, the eighth? We'll have all the numbers. For the final, final.
Four o'clock?
Four o'clock on the eighth.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll make the motion for, uh, on the eighth. That's special needed. The, the, the that's basically what we're doing, correct?
Yep. Do we have a second? Motion and second to go ahead and approve four o'clock on the eighth, the final preliminary budget discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye aye.
All the same sign? Motion approved. Okay. Mr. Jager? Thank you for coming.
Yeah, sorry, I was at another commission meeting.
You, you're perfectly fine. Uh, hazard mitigation? And, uh, KLJ? What do we need to do to light the fire?
Um, I wish I had an answer for that. Last couple times, he said he's ninety-nine percent complete, he was reviewing some things that Bismarck had to sign off on. Um, I still have yet to see that he has any inputs into my art.
So we're still holding off on paying the invoices that okay?
Yeah.
Tom got up here and did all the interviews or whatever, that first meeting? He's gotta go around and talk to everybody he's done.
I have no inclination that he's done any of that. He said it's ninety-nine percent complete.
None of the mayors have indicated that he's been out to see him or done interviews and
Correct.
The things that have needed to be done
Correct.
that have not been. So can we send Mr. Lang over to?
I think it might be a state's attorney time, but I think our contract has not been fulfilled to what they said they were planning on doing.
So where are we at with the extension?
Still on the extension.
So I mean, have we been reapplying, or are we still on?
Still on one for it, currently, still on one.
So how long you got until that's up?
I don't know completely, but I can find that out, I can hope this works.
So maybe that's something that we can add to the special meeting on
It's gonna be fixed because what happens if they don't give It needs to be fixed, because what happens if they don't give you an extension? Or those?
No, we have to restart this whole process all over again?
A lot of money.
That's what, all needs to get involved, and has to be completed. There's got to be some kind of deadline, so I'm saying, we need to have this, this is way past.
Well, if he has talked, done, and done many of the weeks on the ground stuff, it would sound like that was a big part of the project. If he hasn't done that, he's just rubber stamping what he's already done.
Correct.
But then, I thought with him doing part of that, then we would get some money back.
That would be the end kind match, so if we did that, any old meetings, and people went to the meetings, you know, at your town hall meetings, we'd get all of, you know, at least some money back for the end kind match. But it's kind of hard to get end kind match when there's not anything else.
Okay. Let's add that to the special meeting on Tuesday, the eighth. And get our state's attorney involved. Is that something that we...
Maybe you can have, find out how long our special is. It looks like he's gonna be attorney, but he's gonna need to know, you know?
Right. Are you available all the afternoon of the eighth?
I am checking it right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I will be for a while, yeah.
Okay.
I'll be four o'clock.
Yep.
That's that, me, that's, Sean, you have your meeting the eighth?
Ten, ten a.m.
Ten a.m., so we should be done with that, um... Camp on Tuesday? Over the Tuesday?
I can send Leslie. You're good?
You're good?
Yep. You're good.
Good.
Yep. I'll send her another meeting, I'll...
All right, that'll work? Everybody?
Make it work.
And make it work? Okay. Brenda, did you have more for us?
No, I just want to make sure you didn't have any word from me. Okay.
I think that was all we needed from Chris. So, making sure that hazard mitigation is what the status is, how long the extension can last, what we need to do for that. And both mayor and the special meeting on Tuesday, the eighth. Appreciate coming in.
Oh, yeah, no problem. I'll try to make it there.
Yep. All right. Any other visitors and delegations? Sheriff Lang, you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, just to make you aware that, that one of our pickups is making the funny noise in the differential. As soon as they figure out exactly what it is, I'm, I'm all, it'll be done.
Okay. We have spares or...
No, I'm kind of hoping they call and...
Get it in, you know it?
Get one of our new ones done and get it on the road. We got one, it's got all the graphics on it, I'm just going to show it.
Okay.
Should have a late pickup?
Touch.
You can hang your head. We learn that phrases.
And we are, how we are for staffing deputies, uh...
Uh, we still got the one that's, he's just going to be finishing up the academy, he should graduate the twenty-fifth of August, so that can be on the road. Trevor Elfin just started with us last week, but he's got a lot of experience, uh, we've been for the same, a couple weeks, well, Trevor will respond himself.
Okay.
So, that should put us full staff again.
Good.
If your interviews don't close?
If I have closed, um, I, two, I have three, three, two, uh, interviews. Uh, I called the other one, and he said he'd get back to me, and he never has, so... I think we may have to readvertise and then start recruiting.
So, like, that's a question? Question I have of the other two that applied. Do we train them? Got some school we could tie them to or something, I mean?
There's always, there's, there's schools that, one of them possibly, yeah.
Uh, come looking at is, if you get an applicant, and you can turn the applicants away. We're training for everything else, maybe it's something you're going to have to do. You know? Not to just, no, sorry. Right? Or, or if we have to advertise it again, do we put that in there that we can train? You leave it at that first year window, where, like, the paying wise thing is something of, hey, this is what's going to happen, this is what we're going to have to leave you due to the fact that inexperience is there. Kind of like your sheriff, you know? It may have to be an option.
Sure.
Well, as you all know, a lot of it's a money issue, and it's hard to find someone with experience. And, and that's why I'm saying there, we might have to, we have to train someone, maybe because of the, or after one. The trainings are like, the moderator trainings, only offered like once a year, twice a year. But, I mean, we have, our, our workers aren't fairly good at training each other, I mean, that's probably not the best training we could get. Now, we've got a C D L trainer almost on staff, so... That's another issue, C D L, nobody got the C D L certificates nowadays. I can help you out on that.
All right. Let's do the other one.
Because that's a tough one.
I ran through, I got all my stuff and ran through it, it is a crazy thing with the state, and I have some contacts. Could dig, when I was going through the school to do the bus stuff. We're going to get the classes online instead of having to go directly to the, and it's a lot of school. Camp Disco, also, that's a class we offered to local...
Anything else?
Yeah, I'll reach out to one of the other applicants, and see what...
The only thing is, is if, if we're going to do a train, and it didn't meet the standard, you're probably going to have to, yeah, right? Put up yourself, too.
Right. Yep. So, we're getting a little... Off topic? All right. So, we'll have our special meeting on Tuesday, the eighth, that you rule at four p.m. To approve the preliminary budget, twenty twenty-four. These numbers that we got, are a little aggressive?
I'll go through it again.
Okay. And we'll get those ahead of, ahead of that, okay? Is there anything else that, as people are going through their budget books, looking at for really different items? Different things, different numbers? That should be discussed? We've let Candy or myself know, we'll get that included. It's a lot of things to understand and, as we move through that process, but, and remember, these are preliminary budgets. They can't be adjusted higher after that point. We can whittle down between that preliminary one and the final final that we reach. But with that, is there any other announcements that need to be made? This National Health, class of, four thirty to the eighth. All the different first responding agencies will be there, World Fire, City Fire, Sheriff will be there. Like, regional ambulance, search and rescue, probably have some stuff out there. And the food that's being provided is a free will offering with all proceeds flowing towards state. Which we heard from, on the, today. We provide a lot to our community. With that, uh, special meeting on Tuesday, the eighth, that four p.m. Other announcements? Moving on. Thank you all for coming, appreciate your time.